All right. I'd like to call the Pawtucket School Committee Regular Meeting for October 10th to order for 6:00 PM. Clark, please call the roll.
Ms. Benello?
Here.
Ms. Carney?
Here.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Yes.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Shalow?
May I ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Thank you very much for that. We are going to start off with special reports from the student representatives. We're going to start with the Shea representative. Please come to the podium. How are you doing today?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Doing great.
Hello, everyone. My name is Glenna Santos. I am a senior at Shea High School, and I'm here to tell you some of our Shea happenings. To begin with, the boys' cross-country team completed at Bristol Town Beach against Mount Hope in La Salle. Strong performances were made by Joseph Collaron, Daniel Wang, Byron Galdemez, and Jay Von Sumito. All runners continue to show increased strength and improvement. Congrats to all competitors. The girls' volleyball team played a great game against North Providence last week. Both teams played well. They took us to four sets, but we came out victorious. The Lady Raiders are 8-0. The boys' soccer team defeated East Greenwich last night, 2-1. Tyrell and Giovanni had the goals for the Raiders. The girls' tennis team got wins from Daviana, Tuetzi, Larena, and DeeDee to beat Hope High School last night, 7-0. The girls will play again Friday at Slater Park versus Johnston. We, the Class of 2024, will be sponsoring the 2023 Homecoming Dance this Friday. The event will take place at our gym. This Thursday, we will also be holding our Grade Eight Open House. We are excited to meet many interested middle schoolers and showcase our CTE programs, as well as our Grade Nine Academy, our academic programming, and our extracurricular activities. Seniors have met with many different colleges and programs and have begun working on our brag sheets and Common App. Many clubs like Book Club, Art Club, Yearbook Club are among the clubs that are up and running already this year. The boys' football team will compete on Friday at our homecoming game. Best luck to our Raiders. Shea has started a HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, chapter at Shea High School for students interested in health careers. They recently just had their first meeting last week. We are also in our Homecoming Spirit Week. Today was PJ Day. Tomorrow will be Character Day. Thursday will be Anything But a Backpack Day, and Friday will be Spirit Day to show some support to our Raiders. That is all. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
May I have the student representative from Tolman? Student representative from Tolman? How about the student representative from Jaclyn Walsh? How are you doing today? Good, good.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Souza. I'm a senior visual arts major at Jaclyn and Walsh School for the Arts, and I'm here to tell you about what's going on at JMW. So our year is off to a great start. We have all our clubs up and running, and our recruitment events have begun. Our senior theater majors took their first field trip of the year and went to see Top Dog Underdog at GIM. We have had college visiting during advisory and are looking forward to a workshop tomorrow by the College Planning Center of Rhode Island here at 5:00 in the afternoon. We held a restaurant fundraiser last week at Cellos, and it was wonderful to see all the participation and everyone out and about. And we're thrilled to have eight of our students take advantage of an opportunity to take courses at New England Institute of Technology on Tuesday and Thursday nights. So we have many events planned for this year so far, but the ones coming up are tomorrow, we have Picture Day and our current student open house at 6:00 PM. On Friday, October 20th, is the JMW Ultimate Student Competition, where students from every grade level will compete with various talents to see who was crowned the ultimate JMW student. Our 10th and 11th grade film majors will be going to New England Tech for a tour and workshop, and our mock trial team has their first trial on November 7th against Bishop Hendrickson. Our prospective student open house is on October 25th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and we are excited to meet the eighth graders who are interested in attending JMW. And our student council has been very hard at work planning with Aramark for some spooky treats and surprises for Halloween and putting together the first-ever JMW Harvest Festival, which will be on Monday, November 20th, where we will have food, live music, and incorporate sort of an art fair where our students will be showcasing some of their arts. So that is all for this month. Thank you very much.
All right. Did the Tolman representative sneak in in the back up there? No? All right. All right. Thank you very much to the students giving us a heads up on what's going on in your schools. Next item on the agenda is something very special.
Good evening, everyone. So today, we're going to celebrate a teacher's remarkable talent and dedication who has enriched the lives of countless students in our entire school district. As a child who indulged in the arts myself growing up, I am honored to present the 2024 RIAEA Outstanding Middle School Art Educator of the Year Award, whose passion for art education has inspired us all. In the world of education, there are teachers and then there are educators who are artists in their own rights. They can uniquely nurture creativity, cultivate the seeds of imagination, and transform blank canvases into masterpieces. Our recipient today embodied all these qualities and more. This exceptional educator who has dedicated her life to the arts, sharing her passion for creativity and self-expression with every student in her classroom. Her love for art is infectious, and it has the power to light up the faces of her students as they explore their artistic journeys. And her commitment to promoting art education has inspired her students and encouraged others and other educators to recognize the profound impact that the skills that are needed for children to have this overall exciting, wonderful experience as they develop overall. Through her efforts, she has demonstrated the art and has confirmed to the classroom that art is definitely a part of everyday life. Today, I present the Outstanding Middle School Art Educator Award. We honor the talent and dedication of this remarkable, outstanding teacher and celebrate the profound impact she has had on the lives of her students and our entire community. In closing, I would like to quote the famous artist Pablo Picasso, who once said, "Every child is an artist. The problem is how to remain an artist once we grow up." Please join me in congratulating and applauding our 2024 RIAEA Outstanding Middle School Art Educator of the Year, Mrs. Melanie Moe.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will.
I will keep these brief. I'm very touched. Thank you for acknowledging me. I truly believe that I am very lucky to work for an amazing school district. I love Pawtucket. I would always brag about how great our kids are, how great the administration is, how great the school department is. And I truly, honest and truly, enjoy every last student that walks into my classroom. I've been doing this for so long that I'm actually having my kids' kids, which is kind of awesome to see. My former students now have their babies in my classroom, and I just absolutely love it. So I do appreciate the support that Pawtucket has always given me, the wonderful students they send my way, the great administration, the great coworkers I have. It's just been a great journey. So thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is presentations. Building Futures, Ms. Benolo? We're going to pass on Building Futures. Next item is Human Resource Division, Ms. Lofton. Jeez. You're up. You get to speak in part in today's meeting, so.
I'm ready now. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Crystal Lofton, and I am the Chief of Human Resources and Talent, and I'm here today to provide updates to you from our HR department. And Drew is going to help me with my PowerPoint presentation there. Let's give it up for Drew. So I want to start out by sharing with you just briefly some research around recruitment in the HR department. So our role is to recruit and hire. And so we're responsible for vetting and hiring candidates and making sure that we have candidates that meet the necessary qualifications for the specific positions. So part of our role is to write job descriptions, read through the resumes, scheduling, and conducting interviews, and performing background checks on applicants. And you all have a copy, a hard copy of this presentation in front of you as well. So according to SHRM, who is well-known with a lot of human resources research, they state that the workplace study, they did a workplace study that states 68% of organizations are prioritizing finding and recruiting talent with the necessary skills, making it the third highest priority, with the first priority being wellness and the second priority being retaining top talent. So this next slide here, I wanted to provide you with some data of current hiring numbers here in our district, and this is a table of hiring actions for the month of March through the month of October. And as you can see here, this table describes that during the summer months, especially in the month of June, there wasn't a whole lot of hiring that took place, but once we hit July and August, it spiked. This graph that you're looking at on the next page shows year-over-year hires of all district positions, and this is a comparison from school year 2022 to 2023. And as you can see in this graph, it shows that there seems to be not a whole lot of hiring that took place in the month of June. And we believe that there was a spike in the hiring process in August because there was a transition in leadership that took place in June. So when you take a look at August, you see there's a spike, and we believe that's due to central office hirings, teacher hirings, TA hirings, custodial hirings, lunch monitors, and et cetera. You take a look at the next graph. This is year-over-year teacher hires. This is only teachers. The previous graph was all district positions. And if you take a look at this graph, you notice that there was no hiring that took place in June, and most of the hiring took place in August. So in doing some research, we discovered that there was a hiring freeze that took place in May of 2023. So because of the hiring freeze, we believe that contributed to the lack of hires during the month of May and June. But as you can see, it begins to pick up in July and in August. So we're really excited to share with you what we're moving towards as far as the hiring process with our principals in our schools. The principals had an opportunity to really dig into some research and some data around collaborative hiring, and so I wanted to share with you the difference between collaborative hiring and traditional hiring. So basically, collaborative hiring is a team-based method where colleagues from the site come together, the principal pulls the committee together, and in addition, district staff can be invited to the interview process where decisions are made. Collaborative hiring also involves deeper communication around hiring decisions. Long-term collaborative hiring is a powerful and effective strategy for finding the right fit for each school. Versus your traditional hiring practices, it's usually a top-down process where the hiring manager is the primary and potentially the only voice that matters in the hiring process. So the benefits of collaborative hiring are screening, a better screening for a cultural fit, better candidate experience, it reduces unconscious bias, and better quality of hire and a better retention rate of our employees. So I wanted to take the time to share with you some recruitment strategies that we're currently using here in the district. So the first strategy is we're sharing recruitment materials, online postings, social media posts, to ensure that they're compelling and targeted and effective. We're revisiting past and potential candidates. Currently, we use an online program platform called School Spring, and so we're taking a look at previous resumes from the month of May, June, just to take a look to see if there are some candidates that we potentially may have missed. We are implementing a robust cultivating strategy, which means that we are developing a cadence for outreach, a cadence for putting this information out on social media platforms and getting the recruitment material out there. So in the process of creating all of that new material as well, too. We're reviewing the applications and selection and hiring process. We are in the process of working, looking forward to working with Mr. Bropey, to set up hiring fairs for our TAs, substitutes, and for positions that are our high-need areas such as math, science, dual language, psychology, social worker, and special education. And of course, we're doing all of this alongside with the Teacher Alliance President and his team. Outreach to community partners such as colleges and universities and nonprofit organizations, and most importantly, we are very excited to go boots-on-the-ground for marketing at the local universities here in our city. So here are some of our recruitment and hiring goals that we're looking forward to implementing for the upcoming school year, preparing for next school year. Early open hiring and a goal to fill all positions posted by the start of the school year. One of the things that we noticed this year is that we had a lot of vacancies, and just as a parent, I would want my kid to have their teacher in front of them as well, too. So in order to get ahead of that, we're looking to do some early hiring, which means that we're going to work hand-in-hand with our Teacher Alliance to see if we can potentially get these positions filled prior to the summer months. We want to empower our school leaders to conduct site-based interviews and hiring. That's one of the things we talked about with our leaders today, and they're very, very excited about it. Again, as I spoke earlier, early contract fair starting in the spring. We want to expedite offer time for candidates in high area needs, need areas such as special ed classes, math. Last week, we were able to fill three high-need positions in this very school, in fact. So we're really excited to work closely with the principals to expedite the hiring process. And one of the goals that we're looking forward to doing for the upcoming year is as we hire new candidates, we like to partner them with our highly qualified, seasoned staff members. So too often, research shows that teachers come on board, they get hired, especially our new teachers that are coming right out of school, and to, sometimes they're in a silo and they're out on their own. So we really want to partner them up with a seasoned teacher, someone that's highly qualified, that can help show them the ropes, but also that's another way that we can really look into the teacher retention and retaining our teachers that we hire. So now we're going to get into the good part. So I want to walk you through the interview and hiring process for teachers. And so this slide after this one, you're going to see that this is going to be the process, this is the process for classroom positions and teacher promotional positions. So you all have a copy in front of you. I know this is small to see. I'm pretty proud of myself because I did this myself, so. Thank you. So this is a, can I? Hold this. I'm sorry. Do you mind? Okay. This is like killing me. Okay, this is better. So here, this is just a flow chart of this process. So the first part here is an applicant will apply. So HR will post a position, and from there, the candidate will complete the application process using the online platform. And right now, the online platform that we use is School Spring. The second step is the applications are screened and vetted by HR. So part of what we do in HR is we vet all of the applications. We look to see if they have their certification. We take a look to see if they meet the qualifications, and then we communicate that to the principals as well. Now, on the other end, the principals also have access to applicants that apply for their positions at their schools. So the principals can go into School Spring, and they can specifically look in those resumes that are posted for their schools, and they can also vet. But before it even gets to those principals, we're going through that process for them so they wouldn't have to do that. The principal or the supervisor will begin the interview process. So then we move to stage three. So stage three is where the applicant will be invited to a scheduled interview with the interview committee. Now, this step here is where principals have been reminded that this includes one Alliance member that is appointed by the Alliance President for the promotional positions. All right. So we want to move into step four, notify. Each candidate will be notified and provided with details for the interview, which would be the time, the place. We have some candidates that live in other cities or in another state, and so the principal has the freedom to set up virtual interviews at that time as well, too. Recommendations. Again, the interview committee will determine which candidate is being recommended for hire, and this is where the collaborative hiring process really comes into play, where that team will have conversations about who would be the best fit for their school. And once they make that determination, they'll inform HR. The principal will inform HR and who they're recommending for the position, and from that point, HR will begin the onboarding process with the new hire. So we have an interview process for any person who is interested in a district-level promotion position, and those positions include principal, assistant principal, any district-level-type position. So we have a process for that as well. So it's the same setup. It's the same process. Interested applicants will apply to the position that's posted online. Applicants are screened by the hiring manager. Once we set up those interviews, as we set up those interviews, we're working with Alliance President, who will either participate or appoint a member to be a part of that interview committee. And then the recommendation will move forth to our superintendent and her cabinet, and from there, there will be an onboarding process. Once the person is selected, then that person will move forth to HR, and we will move forth with the onboarding process for hire. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for that. So my first question, Ride came out with a new platform that they're using to attract teachers to Rhode Island. It involves a map. It's searchable. I know they had kind of like a press release around this about a week ago. They said that they had 30 communities that were in this already. Pawtucket wasn't one of them. Has that changed? Are we on that map that Ride is using now? It's like a searchable map to find jobs in Rhode Island?
Yeah, we should still be a part of that. I can follow up and just make sure that we're still involved in it. In fact, I have a meeting that I'm attending tomorrow, so I can get more information on that to ensure that.
Okay. And then my second question was, as we look at that year-to-year hiring comparison, I know you mentioned the idea that June was flat because of a hiring freeze, but I see that year-to-year, June was flat. You know, there was, 2022 to 2023, there actually was no real difference there. But then I see in the summer months, July, August, September, year-to-year, 2022, we were hiring almost three times as many people each of those months. And I know that last year, we also were saying that it was really difficult to find teachers. It was a hard time to get people on board, but we did at a three-times rate of where we are, where we were this summer. What, you know, in your analysis, what are you thinking is the reason for that? Do we have fewer vacancies, and that's why? Or do we just, we couldn't find as many teachers?
Well, we could have fewer vacancies, but I also think that part of this is allowing principals to be a part of the interview process. And so when you look at the data, you know, oftentimes, when I analyze this, the bulk of the interview hiring and interviews and process took place at central office. And so now we're moving this to site-based with support from HR. And so I believe that based on the work that we've done so far with principals and at the rapid pace that we're moving with hiring teachers, we were able to hire three teachers just last week just for this very school, and that was due to working very closely with the principal with this hiring process.
So you think that that transition to site-based hiring over the summer slowed down our hiring process?
I think because it was not site-based, that could have slowed down the process. Now we're moving to site-based hiring. And so because we're moving to site-based hiring, we see a quicker response to candidates and a quicker response to moving into hiring candidates for the position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I add something?
And I just want to add, just overall, nationwide, especially in the northern states, school doesn't end to the end of June. So there's not a lot of hiring going on in June because everyone is mostly focusing on closing out the school year. The best time to hire is during spring, March, April, May. Another peak time is December because...
Another peak time is December because, Ms. Lofton and I was talking about earlier, because that's the first round of graduates that are graduating from the College of Education. So we're going to try to catch them. And then the next rollout is the next, I think they graduate April, May. And a lot of young folks that graduate are not looking at jobs, for jobs at the end of the school year because school is ending, so they start looking for their job in July, August, September. So those are the peak months nationally. A little different now in the South because they end school in the southern states, May. They're out. So hiring starts earlier. But up in the northern states, you usually don't get out of school till June. So that's another downside because we're closing out the school year.
I just wanted to mention it. I think you're right. It could be the amount of vacant positions we had open in school year '22 versus school. So as a percentage, we may be hiring at a higher percentage, but raw numbers, we were higher in '22. It makes sense to me.
Any other questions? Ms. Lofton, okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that presentation. Next item on the agenda is public participation. First person, I think it was Megan? Meg, yes?
So this is very new for me. I don't do a lot of public speaking, so just bear with me and my anxiety while I go through this. Of course, of course. I have so many notes on here to remind me to pause and smile, so. I'll see how I do. So I'm a mother of a son who has an IEP. And on his IEP, it states that he is to be picked up and dropped off at home, picked up at home and then dropped off back at home from the first student company. And these buses do stop right in front of our house. And where we live, we actually live right behind St. Cecilia School, the church and the school. And we're behind the school. And so many times last year, a lot of motorists would drive by my son's bus, which was stopped, with the stop arm out. And so it happened way too many times last year. It happened already once this year. And so trying to get something moving here. I actually contacted the principal of St. Cecilia. And she was not aware of what was happening behind her school. But she did inform me that the same problem is happening in front of her school. So she thanked me for bringing this to her attention. She had told me that she would let her parents know that the importance of stopping at school buses that are stopped. And I actually talked to my son's bus driver. I was really curious. I'm like, you know, you can take someone's license plate, but like, what can you do with it? And she actually told me that they can't do anything with it without evidence. And so I have done a lot of research. And there are plenty of spots in this country, plenty of states and towns in this country. And they have, in fact, cameras on the outside of the bus, so they can actually see who is passing. And so of course, what I'm proposing is to have these cameras installed on the outside of all the school buses in Pawtucket. And in Rhode Island General Law 3151-2, the school department, they are authorized to install digital video school bus violation detection monitoring systems. And I also do know with my research that there is a town pretty close to us that have started this process. I actually saw a clip on YouTube from NBC 10 News. And it was in Cumberland that they are starting this process. And also, Rhode Island General Law 312012, this is part of the law. Punished by a fine not to exceed $300 and/or suspension of driving license for a period not to exceed 30 days for the first offense. And because this is such a serious law in my eyes, I don't understand why nothing has been happening when people do pass a stop-school bus. Like, this is the safety of my son, not just my son, but all the other students as well. So I just, I want to thank you for your time. If you have any questions? Oh, oh. That's fine. Okay. Yes, yes, thank you.
You go ahead, absolutely.
This committee, we looked at busing, cameras on buses a while back. And met, really, the long and short of it was the company that provides the bus camera
Yes.
wasn't willing to do it for every bus in the city. Just the buses that travel the highly traffic roads. So of the busing, of the buses we had in the city, there was four or five that they would have agreed to put the cameras on. And those being on Newport Ave, Goff, and so forth. But you're, the top half of Norfolk Avenue?
Yes, we're right near Newport Ave.
And so that section behind St. Cecilia School and Church is a one-way to Newport Ave in the afternoon, correct?
In the morning and in the afternoon. In the morning, it's a one-way.
From seven to nine?
From seven to nine in the morning. And then I want to say between one and two or 2:30 in the afternoon.
And the cars, I'm trying to, the bus dropped your son off headed towards Daggett Avenue or towards Newport Avenue?
So when my son is picked up in the morning by the bus, the bus is facing towards Daggett. So it is going the direction it's supposed to.
Right.
And then on the occasions that this has happened, I did notice that it's parents of students, the students who go to St. Cecilia. And they're, they're not thinking, I'm not, I actually did confront a mother this year, the one time it happened this year. And she apologized. And then she actually thanked me for bringing this to her attention because she felt horrible. So I have noticed that most of these motorists are the parents of these students. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next person that signed up for public participation, Elizabeth?
Hello, my name's Elizabeth McClellan, and I'm a teacher in Pawtucket. And I'm here because I'm at a loss for where else to go. It isn't on your agenda tonight, but it's relative to what happens in our district every day. Three years, I tried to get a form that is provided to every PSD student, translated for the students and their families. That year and each year since, I have tried reaching out to my many immediate building administrators, different departments in central office. And I even put in a technology travel ticket. I've gotten answers such as, "We don't have that. I'm not sure I'll get back to you." "Wow, I can't believe that isn't translated." "You're right. Let me see what I can do." Three years later, I still don't have what my students and my families need. It seems like a small ask to me. At the beginning of the school year, each teacher is given this form. It's intended to provide the students and usually their families, too. It contains their student Google login information, how to log into Skyward, and expected online etiquette. Over the past three years, there's been an increase in use of technology and changes in the way it's utilized in education. There's an essential technology component in our teaching and learning with the need to use this information at school and home daily. Yet still, it's only provided in English. There are 300 students that attend my school, with close to 90 of them not speaking English as their primary language. I have sent this form home with the username and password highlighted, but every year, it feels wrong. So every year, I ask again, "Is this form translated yet?" And I get the same replies. I'm asking for your help to ensure our community gets what it needs. Every month, there's at least one flyer or form that's sent to the schools from central office to be sent home to our families. It is sent to us in English only. That means that at 16 different schools, someone, and usually more than one person, takes the provided information, uses Google Translate to put the information into the languages we need for our specific students. And we all know how inaccurate Google Translate can be. And therefore, a gross disservice to our families. The one that hasn't an actionable and immediate solution. This shouldn't need to happen at each of our 16 schools across the district. There shouldn't be multiple people in multiple buildings recreating the same necessary information all around the district. Forms and flyers created by the district that need to be disseminated should come to us in the languages we need in our building. Sorry, I lost my place. At the same time. It has to stop being a secondary thought that waits for someone at the building level to ask for a translation, which is then sent a few days later, causing a delay in information to our non-English-speaking families. This is a pervasive issue that impacts all levels of communication with families. Speaking specifically to the elementary level, all families receive a report card, report cards only in English, but the accompanying explanations of the grading system are translated. By only translating the grading systems, but not the indicators, indicators students are being graded in does not allow families to access the information about their children and make informed decisions. By doing this, the district is taking agency away from families. In my classroom, when I need to send a message home that can't be done in the 280 characters that Kenvos allows, I write the message, translate it, copy it, and then send it out. I don't understand why it is so common to be an afterthought. This is not a clerical issue. It's an issue of equity, and the district is continuously showing a complete disregard for our families with its refusal to address the issue. It's time to start getting this right. Pawtucket families deserve better. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone who signed up for public participation. Next item on the agenda is approval, can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes of June 29, 2023? Motion made by Ms. Grant, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Any discussion? All those in favor? All of the opposed? All right. Next item is new business discussion action item. First item up under that is field trip for committee approval. Assistant Superintendent Ramsey.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This evening, we are asking for school committee approval for an overnight field trip, Toman High School DECA Power Trip Conference in Austin, Texas, from November 17th to November 19th. This will include three students and one chaperone. And this field trip, the students will participate in the DECA Power Trip. This conference will reinforce 21st century skills through participation in interactive sessions, dynamic general sessions, learning and leadership labs, full of powerful presentations by professionals and all the favorites of a leadership conference.
Do I have approval? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Benolo, seconded by, by Ms. Doobie. Discussion? It was paid for by a grant?
A DECA.
A DECA grant. All those, clerk, all those in favor? All of the opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next item, it's going to be Superintendent Royal, approval of homeschool list.
Okay, so before you this evening is a list of students and their initials of their homeschool as well, who apply for homeschooling this year. In accordance with the school committee policy, we are requesting your approval on this list.
Seconded by Ms. Doobie, discussion. Ms. Doobie first?
The categories that we need to include here, are they per state law? The name, the school, and the gender? Or is this, I mean, is there a reason that we've selected these three categories to identify with?
This is, correct.
Gender was requested? I don't recall that, but okay, thank you.
Ms. Benolo?
So I believe this is a significant increase from what it was last year? No? Okay. I thought it was.
Okay. Any other question about it?
No, I was just curious overall, how it, has it increased over the past few years? Between COVID and people seeking alternate education. I'm curious. Can you get us that information?
Sure I can.
Maybe the last three or four years?
Three or four years?
Yeah, first.
Going back as far as I can, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, here in all the discussion, all of the favor? All of the opposed? Okay. Next item, going to be Assistant Superintendent Ramsey and team, recommendation to award Shea High School asbestos testing service.
This is Benolo in the Facilities Committee, with backup by Ms. Ramsey, Mr. Cody, and Mr. Jackson. So recommendation to award Shea High School asbestos abatement consultant services to analytical of, Rhode Island Analytical of Warwick in the amount of $3,429. This was taken up at the Facilities Committee and passed unanimously.
Ms. Charbonneau makes a motion to approve, seconded by Ms. Grant. Any discussion? Here in no discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo? Ms. Carney? Mr. Charbonneau? Ms. Doobie? Ms. Fernandez? Ms. Grant? Mr. Shalow?
Yes. Second item, Ms. Benolo, is this, are you part of team? All right, go ahead for the approval to submit to RIDE Shea Fire Safety Upgrades Design Drawings.
So these are the design drawings that will go to RIDE. They are schematic drawings. And then once they're approved, they will go to design. So these were also brought up at the Facilities Committee and approved unanimously.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Grant. Any discussion on the fire safety? Please forgive me because I thought there was a, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo? Ms. Carney? Mr. Charbonneau? Ms. Doobie? Ms. Fernandez? Ms. Grant? Mr. Shalow?
Yes. All right, next item, recommendation to award RTA 12 Baldwin Elementary School HVAC plumbing fire protection. Ms. Ramsey and team, Ms. Benolo?
Okay, so that was brought before the committee. The approved vendor is Delta Mechanical for the cost of $9,106,415. It was approved unanimously by the committee. There are a couple of items that were asked and answered by Jared of Colliers. And I believe there's a couple answers that you still have that you will get for us. But nothing that would impact approving. There were just little questions like the final flashing on the roof by the roofer, which is line 49, was a question because that was specified and it's not specified by the other vendors. So, but all was asked, all was answered, and it was approved.
Mr., can I get a motion on the, motion by Ms. Benolo, I'm sorry, by Ms. Doobie, seconded by Ms. Grant. And Mr. Charbonneau, you have the floor.
Just on the last page of the evaluation form, MBE second tier. What is that?
That is just spelling out the, not the main subcontractor, but the subcontractor subcontractors, sort of the second tier of subcontractors that he is hiring. And it's a total contract amount of 1.5 million, which brings us to 17% MBE with award of this bid. So within this RTA and a lot of the other subcontractors' RTAs, they often have subcontractors underneath them as well.
Okay, so Delta's the only one that? So Delta's the only one that, that represented an MBE participation?
So, and I don't remember the name of the company that was, so Delta Mechanical has a subcontractor that has a percentage of the work that they will be performing, and in that, that is the MBE percentage that we are getting.
Right. But none of the other bidders reference that.
Yes, none of the, no, Delta, Delta Mechanical was the only bidder that we had that had any MBE percentage, correct?
Okay.
The low bidder also had 17% MBE, which is good.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino?
Yes.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Shalow?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is recommendation to award RTA 13 for Elizabeth Baldwin Elementary School Windows Metal Panels. Ms. Benolo and team.
Yes. So this was discussed also at the Facilities Meeting, and they voted unanimously to forward Sunrise Erectors Incorporated at the amount of $4,724,75 for the window, windows and metal panels.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Chavino, seconded by Ms. Grant. Discussion. Mr. Chavino.
And just for clarity, windows means windows in the whole building. Every window that is going to be in that building is included in this?
Yes. So windows, interior and exterior, and the storefronts, which are the big glass wall windows, yes?
Yep. Everything's included. Perfect.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino?
Yes.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Shalow?
Yes. Next item is recommendation to award RTA 14 Elizabeth Baldwin Elementary School Electrical. Ms. Benolo and team.
So this went before the committee, and it voted unanimously to award this to Rossi Electric Incorporated of Cranston in the amount of $6,192,492.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion, motion by Mr. Chavino, seconded by Ms. Grant. Discussion. Mr. Chavino.
Just to go back to the MBE thing, so is that common practice on the evaluation forms? They'll list, like, so if we don't see it listed in the window metal and don't see it listed in the electrical, does that mean it's zero?
So, so at this moment, it's currently zero. That means the bids came in with zero, and Sarah can maybe talk a little bit about it, but they are continuing to work with the contractors on attempting to hire other subcontractors after the award to be able to get more MBE percentage. But this is the full contract that they will be awarded. So right now, yes, MBE percentage on the HVAC Plumbing and Fire Protection was 17%, and we currently have 0% for both electrical and for the windows and metal panels. That being said, we've had some others that have come in significantly higher than that. We also have architects that have approximately 30% MBE in their fees, so it is a global fee. So throughout the project, you're going to see some subcontractors come in with zero and some come in with significantly more than the goal.
Okay.
Ms. Benolo?
So I anticipate at the next Facilities Meeting, which we can bring forward to the school committee, they will tell us where we are sitting with our MBE at this point for Baldwin, and then we can move on from there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Benolo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino?
Yes.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Shalow?
Yes. Next item is under discussion items, enrollment reports. Diana, there's no one who's giving, oh, does anyone have any question? Oh, Ms. Doobie.
So my question is, do we have real numbers for Baldwin? I mean, I know we have numbers here that show how many students are at Baldwin, but those are the students that were housing at, at the annex. And so I see 300 at the annex, and then I know that our numbers at Winters are, as a result, inflated because we have students at Winters who are part of our Baldwin community. So as we're building this school, I know we had someone at the meeting speaking about the need for more playground space, and when I look at the numbers, I see that they, they don't look as high as when we first started conceiving of the idea of Baldwin. In fact, Fallon looks to be possibly our biggest elementary school. So I just, as we're, as we're going into these conversations, do we right now have that number? Like, do we know how many of these Winters kids are actually Baldwin community kids? Or an estimate?
If it can be interpreted.
So I can't give you a specific right now.
Yeah.
But I could and share it with the clerk tomorrow.
Okay.
We code students in our student informations as Baldwin housed at Winters, so we have a specific code for them. But when we moved them over, it was one track of each grade level, so it's about 110 to 125 students.
So, so that would say that our Baldwin school is smaller than Nat Green, smaller than Fallon, and, I mean, I'm just scanning quickly, smaller than Potter Burns. Is, is that correct?
So what you're looking at, yes, Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
So we have gotten an increased transfer request while Baldwin is then at the annex.
Okay.
That's been granted. So that is also a number I'd be able to share with the clerk.
Are we, are we also coding those students? Are they, are they temporary transfers, or are they parents who are just like?
Annual transfers.
Okay.
School committee policy. So they are annual transfers, and we do track that. They are not, they are coded as a manual override in the system, but Diana and I keep in league, we keep that data separate for every transaction, goes through every transfer request that's granted. So we can get all the students that homeschool as Baldwin, who have a transfer request. So that number will be a little bit higher than that 110 to 125 that we indicated. So this should be around very high four, very high four hundreds.
And, and then that, that Fallon number is including PK as well? Yes? Yes. Okay. Thank you. They're all full day at Fallon? There's no half days that we're counting there? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Carney? Then Ms. Grant.
Thank you. I, I want to just speak momentarily about the outplacement numbers. Just wondering what the outplacement numbers were over the last couple of years as well. 242 is a lot, and I'm looking through each grade, you know, and seeing higher numbers in grade 12, grade 11, just wanting to be sure that we are outplacing students that we cannot service in our district. And to remind everyone that we really want to make sure that we're holding our outplacements accountable for the growth and proficiency of, of our students as well. The accountability system for the state adds their, their numbers into our district numbers, so outplace students are absolutely included in all of our, our subcategories for all of our accountability. And so I want to make sure that that accountability is extending to our, our outplacement facilities, and that these large numbers of students are getting what they need and are there only because we are unable, you know, to, to service all of their needs. So it just seems awfully high. I'm just wondering if we could get an outplace enrollment over the last three years.
Thank you very much. Ms. Grant, you have the floor.
I'm a little concerned about the, the numbers for our middle schools, and seeing what we have over here to the left. Are, are we growing out of our middle schools? It seems like in the school alone, we don't have enough classrooms for our students to be there. So can we get something showing us maybe how many classrooms we have, what classes we have, how many students? Because I think we really need to make sure that our students are having their classes in appropriate classrooms. Like I said, there's a classroom right over there to the left in the media center, and it would just be nice to just kind of see, you know, are there, what, is this happening because we're adding types of classes, or is our enrollment higher? But I definitely think we need to, and I know there are more of our, our music that are on carts, but I think it would be nice to kind of see exactly what we have for students, what we have for classrooms, just to make sure that we're providing the proper space for everyone.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grant. Did anyone else have their hand up? No other discussion on that? Okay. Next item is going to be an update on school district capital projects. Ms. Benolo.
Well, what I have given you all is a document that's part of Phase Two, and this just gives you a recap of the projects that we've done or are in process of doing from 2016 to 2026. The figures in the total, the total right now stands at $245,549,172. That does not include any processes, any, anything that is in process at the moment. Had to put the words in the right order there. So that, of course, will be increased. It'll also be increased by a unified high school, by Baldwin, by playgrounds that, work that we have coming that's not in that total. So I just wanted people to be able to see that we have received funding from the state, we have received grants, we are putting our money where it should be, we're putting it into our buildings, we're putting it into our students, and I wanted all of the committee and the public as well to know that we are doing this.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions about all the projects? And I know this was mostly done by the past school committee members. You guys really have pushed the city going forward with the new builds, the revent, you know, you redid Nathaniel Green. You guys have been doing a heck of a job. I know. That's why I'm looking right here. I'm just, guys have been doing great. Any other discussion about this? All right. Hearing none. Next item is superintendent's update. Superintendent, it's all yours.
Yes, just a few updates. Want to start with the food, food truck delivery that was delivered at Shea High School on September 19th. It was a very exciting day for the students. Our next steps are to file for the appropriate paperwork with the DOH, apply for permits with the city, and to have the food truck inspected by the state fire marshal. Once that is completed, then we'll have information coming to you about the ribbon cutting event. So we're excited for our CT culinary students and the teaching staff. They are super duper excited, looking forward. I got a chance to go walk it myself with the students when they arrive. Their faces were priceless, to say the least. So they're looking forward to working and putting that truck on the road. So congratulations Shea students. Next, we have, we had our ribbon cutting for everyone's playground, which was a huge success. We celebrated at everyone's playground at Curran McCabe on September 20th. This 14,000 square foot playground is open to all families, and it's accessible to all students and with all different abilities. So the community is enjoying it. We are going to continue to work with tweaking some things, adding some signs, because we really want to take care of our playground in the community. And also, we had an opportunity to enjoy the opening with the committee members. We were joined by Governor Dan McKee, Lieutenant Governor Sabina Matos, members of the community, union rep, President Ron Bopray, and I'm going to say Bopray, not Broke. Gotcha. City Councilor David Moran, state rep Felix, members of the Curran McCabe School and the community. And like I said before, this is a beacon of hope, equality, and commitment that we are creating for our world and for everyone with all abilities, regardless, can play, laugh, and make memories together. We did a special dedication to Kim and her daughter, Tegan, for really carrying this vision into a reality. And along with the committee members and Joanne Benolo, president of the Facilities Committee, we just want to say thank you and looking forward to playing. Next, we had our family and community night. The first one was held September 20th at Winters Elementary, which is a beautiful school, which allowed me to introduce myself, my executive team, cabinet members. I had a few of my committee members there as well, and they joined in to having conversations with our family. We did a gift card raffle, which was a huge success. We gave away $25 gift cards to the grocery store for our families. So Joanne was, was there, and our president, yeah, you were there. Were you there? You were there. Okay. It's a long time ago. We also gave ice cream out to our families, had an opportunity to answer questions, and just to really get an opportunity just to speak with the families and students in person. So I'm looking forward to the next schedule. I had to reschedule due to a medical emergency. So it is now scheduled October 24th, 6 to 7, at Varia Elementary School. So I'm looking forward to seeing you there. Again, it's October 24th, 6 to 7, at Varia Elementary School. We will be giving our gift cards again. Yay! It's big hit. And also the ice cream as well. In addition, I had an opportunity to visit the Math Interventionist Training. We have a lot of training going on in our district. Thank you to all the personnel that, it takes a lot of time to schedule, create the trainings, deliver the trainings, and they're doing such an awesome job. So I sat in on the Math PD on September 20th. The focus was on implementation of math and reframing the MTSS RTI process and structure, and to really focus, narrow our focus on what students need in the classroom. Also, we had a huge success, I didn't add it to my list, but just off the top of my head, where Melissa, is she here? Offered, here she is, there she is, offered a Spanish training to our educators. And when I tell you, I went down to visit, I tried to visit all of my trainings, and I went up, was it up third floor to the classroom? Of course, I ran into Ron. And it was so hot in the room that day, but it was such a packed house. We didn't offer teachers any pay. We just said, this is one way we can improve instruction in the classroom. If you please just join us after school to learn how to communicate better with our parents and learn Spanish. And when I tell you it was a packed house to the point, well, Melissa's now setting up two more sessions.
Well, it's an eight-part series. They committed to come eight times, but I started a whole other cohort.
Another whole cohort. So they committed to that. So I just want to give a huge round of applause. That just shows the dedication of the teachers in our district, and I'm, I'm so proud to be a part of the Pawtucket family. Also, the Colsey and Boys Town signups are taking place at school. Parents, please take advantage of these programs we have set up for your students. Please contact your school, and they will be able to share any information that you may need to sign your students up. Also today, I had a wonderful opportunity to attend the principal training. So we had all the principals today, where they engaged in learning about, deeper than their understanding around the importance of progress monitoring and using data to drive their instruction. We're using our book, Leverage Leadership 2.0, which is a research-based book that they're pulling information from. They gleaned a lot of information. In November Committee Meeting, I will be sharing the feedback from our leaders, because after every training, we asked them for their feedback, so it will guide our next training session. So I'll be happy to share the information with the committee and the community in November's meeting. Also, last but not least, back to school, open house, PTO, and PTA. We got all of them. Our schools have had their open house, back to school events. We encourage all our families to get involved in their schools. Many of the schools have some family events coming up, some tonight. I think I had one school, and they're continuing throughout the week and next week. So please reach out. You have, you can check our calendar that is on our district website, and you're more than welcome to go to your school's website to check the calendar as to the specific day and time. and you're more than welcome to go to your school's website to check the calendar as to the specific day and time that your students will be gauging the open house, and we are looking forward to each and one of you attending and supporting our schools. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next item is School Committee Members' Updates. Ms. Carney, please start us off.
Just would like to extend my congratulations to Ms. Mo, I've worked with her for years, very well deserved. My own son is a huge fan of Ms. Mo and looks forward, and has participated in the after-school R programs and so forth that she has extended. So thank you again, congratulations.
Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Benolo.
So, in facilities, we'll do that first. There are about nine windows left to be put in golf in Phase One. The last delivery should arrive on the sixteenth, and the remaining windows should be in place that week, the week of the sixteenth. And Phase Two will be done in the spring, but all windows will have been received by us, so they're in storage. Little, eighty-five percent of all sides of the roof are done. They are now working on the metal edges and metal in the middle, the cap sheeting in the center of the roof. Jenks has about forty percent of the roof done. There are also forty percent of the cap sheet over the classrooms. They are working on doing some masonry and changing a few windows because the sills needed to be lifted and everything had to be brought up to that, that level. Curran McCabe, they're working on the punch list. I did, and Kim, this is something for you and I to work on. Mother of a special needs child called and said that the thing we're missing in the playground is the communication board, so the boards that, like Teagan uses to talk. They think that one should be out there so that the kids, when they're out on recess, are, have the ability to show them where it's, they're hot, they're cold, they need to go to the bathroom, any of those things. So we need to start looking for communication boards so we can put them in our playgrounds. So that was another one, but they're working on the punch list. Fallon's break lists are now a hundred percent done. They're still working on the alarms. They should be working on and finishing the programming over Christmas break. Potter Burns still has one lolly in front of it, and that's supposed to be out this week. Baldwin, they're still pouring concrete. The ADA bathrooms, they're working on the hookups on them, but they're all on schedule. And Colliers, Holly from Colliers, and Jonathan Levy contacted, Holly contacted the Sol Aviv Group at the request of the school committee and the mayor through discussion, and they have yet to receive a response from them, so no response, whatever. We can't do anything, so, but the, we have received the letter of intent and the letter of support signed by the mayor, and the site control goes to the city council on this week. Today?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Site control tomorrow, so it goes to them, and we'll see what's happening. So, all of that aside, it has been brought to my attention that we have a handicap van, oh, in the, a handicap bus that we are still waiting for equipment on, and we can't use it. We do have someone who is in our transition program that is in a wheelchair, but we do not have the ability to transport that person because the van is not, it, it doesn't need to be fixed.
No, it needs, it needs shore lights on, it needs equipment on top, it needs to be, it needs to have an alarm beside it with a number. They won't inspect the vehicle like that until you have all that, it happened similar a few years ago, and we ended up doing the bus. We had to wait on that, and it stayed in our lock for a long, long time.
So I know it's been a while, so we're still waiting, and we're gonna contact Chris and find out, get an ETA on that. And then as far as the reports that we get for the school committee, we've always received a number of reports. We don't have incident reports, so I don't think all of our students are a hundred percent angel, so I know there's gonna be something happening in the schools. So I'd like to be able to see the incident reports again by school. I'd also like to see an absentee report, how many students are calling in absent on a regular basis? Because I think that's important, if they lose one, one day a month, that they're considered chronically absent, and that has a big impact on their education. So we need to look at that and find a way to address it. The other thing is late students. So I brought my granddaughter to school late. She goes to Toman, and I got there exactly at the right time, but that was late for her to get in the door, so bad grandma.
Say that again? You brought her there at the right time, but it.
Yeah, it was eight o'clock I got there, but they closed the doors at eight, so I got her there late. But, so, at Toman, they check in inside, the inside foyer. The line went from the inside foyer all the way out the door and all the way down the steps. So that would have taken another twenty minutes to a half hour for that student who is at the end of the line to get into class. So when that happens, that's disrupting every single classroom in that building. There is no penalty for being late. There's pretty much no penalty for a lot of things, and I think this is something that we really need to look at. How many kids are coming, if it's the same fifty kids that are coming in late every day, then we need to address. You know, occasionally, it's a doctor's visit or something else, mom's late, grandma's late. That's one thing on occasion, but when it's repeated, and the lines are out there all the time. So if we could look into that, as far as tardiness in all our schools, elementary through high, because I'm sure it's affecting everybody, so if we could address that, and I think that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Benolo, Mr. Chabino.
I yielded my time to Ms. Benolo earlier, apparently. I'm good. Good night, everyone, thank you.
I'm usually quiet.
Ms. Doobie.
I, I sit on the Board of the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, and the breakfast is coming up, that they, their annual breakfast is coming up, and one of the ideas that is going to be showcased there is the Yonder Pouches that were used in the middle schools in Providence, they were used as a pilot, they are something that cell phones go in. I don't know a ton about them yet, I'm not sure what Providence's experience with them was, but I know we have several people who are with us now who came from Providence, and I think that it's interesting for us to look into. I know that a lot of teachers speak about the disruptive nature of cell phones in the classroom, and if the reports from Providence are correct, this has done wonders for the middle school environment to have these pouches that, that the students' cell phones are in and locked. So, as I said, I haven't done all the research yet, and I, but I am curious to know from people who are in Providence, and after this breakfast, and we learn more about them, if it's something that we think is a good idea in our middle schools and our high schools here. Thank you, good night.
Ms. Doobie, Deputy Chair Grant.
I am, I'm good, thanks, guys, have a good night.
I will echo Mr. Chabino and Ms., and Deputy Chair Grant, I'm good, thank you very much. So I have a motion to adjourn. So moved by Ms. Grant, so moved, seconded by Ms. Benolo, order the favor, order the pose. We're adjourned, thank you.